Okay.
Bruce Bartman, Jamaica.
Tom and Nadia Newfing.
Lyndal Ball, Brookline.
Patty Dixon, Jamaica.
Emily Long, Newfing.
Stephen John, Superintendent.
Durin Dorfman, Principal.
Jeremy Kellyway, Newfing.
Chloe Fawcett, Student Member.
Thank you.
Great.
Um, okay, additions and corrections to the agenda. Did anybody see anything that they had a question or felt was not?
Did you want to put on the breakfast?
That's in here.
It's on here.
It's under Old Business.
Yeah, it's under Old Business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
There will be no executive session as far as that.
Okay.
Unless the Board requests.
Okay, so we're all...
Is this the time to pull off the something out of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Sure.
It's just a slight...
Do you want to discuss something on a policy?
Yeah. Very slight.
So are you removing Policy F-30 from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, and one other thing.
Where do we take it up?
There was...
Old Business.
Oh, so we're going to move Policy Harassment, Hazing, and Bullying to Old Business. Okay?
And there was no regional Career Center meeting, so there's no report.
Okay.
And the financial officer is ill. Can't make it tonight, hasn't been in the office today, so I'll just record the questions you may have about the financial statements and the end of the year report. There is a correction that I'll announce. And I think that's it for my additions.
Okay. Um, members of the public? There are none. Correspondence? Does anybody have correspondence? I don't get correspondence, so...
There was nothing in the box. We did get Headline News last week, Wednesday.
Yes.
In the reformer, so lots of nice pictures.
It was great.
Good coverage.
That's wonderful.
And thanks to Jamaica, to Amelia.
Yeah, okay, wonderful. Administrative and Board reports. Principal's report, that was sent out by email. And thank you for pulling that together with all you have going on.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I couldn't submit a typical report with the goings-on of the school. It's been a wonderful start to the school year. These students have really come back ready to learn and thrilled to be in school. It's a very orderly start to the school year, and it's wonderful. But because of what's happening in my folks, I am... I was able to create, you know, an assessment for the School Board goals for Vision 2020 to... for us to discuss because it was a focus task, which is how we're approaching a lot of this fall because of being pulled away.
This is very helpful because this is something we should really have for everything that we do, is our goals, and utilize them. This was very helpful. Does anybody have questions, or did you want to speak? And then a little more?
I have a question. Durin, thank you, first of all. I know you've had a heck of a rocky start to your first few weeks, and I hope everything's going well. I just wanted to ask, I have struggled some to look at, I think it's maybe technological issues, to look at the S-BAC scores online. Are we going to, when and how are we going to, and I should ask you too, Stephen, when are we, how are we going to look at, I mean, you gave a summary and you spoke mostly about math, but I would love to see where we are, with the caveat, of course, that we understand, just like Rebecca Holcomb has been saying all along, that this is the very beginning, and, you know, we shouldn't put undue weight on any of the outcomes on this, but I do think it's important that we understand what we're looking at and see whether we're recognizing any correlation with improvements or lack thereof. So when can we look at that, and maybe you could give us some better advice on how to review them, and especially how we compare to state, because I, you know, that's the only thing that really means anything at this point in time, I guess.
Yeah, well, at the level at which the public is able to access the information, it's pretty hard to do anything but jump to a conclusion, oh, we're better than the state, or we're worse than the state, so...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not concerned about that.
I understand that, but I'm speaking for the public out there that may be able to go online. I know that Rebecca has pointed out that they won't even report publicly on any schools that have a grade level less than.
Understood.
And so forth. We know why that is, statistical creation. But Durin has certainly, we've consulted today, and she's been able to get down to the drill, down to the student profile, which of course, we can't share individually, but we can share a summary of the analysis of the student profiles predicted regarding their performance compared to their coursework that they've done to prepare them.
Sure.
And there ought to be a correlation between the two, if the teaching is effective. And then also the observed, the observation of the teacher who's supervising the test as to whether that test was a valid indicator of the student's effort and engagement in the test. Now, that's a matter of attitude that really is something that we have to address as well.
It comes up under other reports as well, so...
Yeah, it's fine. So, yeah, so, anyway, I do think that you should expect next month to have such a report with not only that, but recommendations that inform the Board as to what we think administratively should be invested in, continue to invest in, or have fewer investments as we look forward to Budget FY '17. Today, there was an in-service, which Durin will report on, which is beginning to make an effort to respond to needs that were previously seen by the staff and continue to be called to our attention by the S-BAC scores, particularly in English Language Arts.
So then you are using this, the scores already, to help direct future professional development and work in the SU? Is that what you're saying?
That's the intention. We can't say that Durin Plan is in service with the benefit of the S-BAC scores. I'm just saying, there is further fuel behind this initiative regarding the in-service date the Board approved back in June, to focus on reading.
Okay, so we're talking, the answer to my question is next month we should see something, because it's really important how, you know, how it fits into our goals and the work that, and I applaud you, Durin, for putting that in there.
Yeah.
This is, the measures are huge and really lofty, and I don't, you know, I can't even imagine how anybody would have time to pull all this together, especially since some of this we don't already do, but some of it we do, so there are a lot of, at the bottom you have the asterisk that says indicates a new report of data not previously presented to the School Board. My hope is that what that, because there's a lot of those in here, my hope is that it's not digging deep at stuff that's just not been reported. It's not that you have to spend a huge amount of extra time, because you gave us, I think, somewhere near a 40-page report last month. So there's a lot of data, and I want to make sure that we are utilizing data appropriately to improve education for our kids. And so there's a lot in here, and I don't know how the Board's going to address the vision piece, but my hope is that this isn't our only discussion around the School Board's vision for the future. I had hoped that when we did our retreat last summer, that we would take this vision of where we would like to be in 2020 and get some, a timeline on it, and start to look at where are we going to be in three years, where are we going to be in five years, where are we going to be in eight years, you know, what is our long-term goal? That's the 2020 piece, but it would be very helpful to have, like, incremental steps here, what our next pieces are. And of course, the S-BACs are one small piece that will, should inform all of that. So I guess I'm trying to ask for some clarification on how we're going to pull all this together without being completely overwhelmed with data, because the fact is that even at our last meeting, there was an awful lot of data there for us to absorb, and I'm a data person. I love it. I think we should have more, but I don't want it to be you, you know, working hard to put out a lot of data that we're not going to be using or using to inform our role as a School Board. So I hope that the Board itself will have that conversation, you know, at some point. I don't think we can possibly go into that at this point, and if we even had to hold a special meeting for it, I think it would be worthwhile. We didn't hold a retreat this year, but I hope that we'll take this seriously, because I don't know how it informs you if we're not clear on where our goals are, and we represent our community, who pays the bill, you know? So that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, so can I, you know, give back a clarifying question?
Sure.
That is, one thing the Board members can really help do to represent your constituency is when you read this document, you go through the measures and say, which ones are worth the effort, which are going to, put yourself in the decision-making position of if there's a recommendation from the administration regarding budget, investment, professional learning, and so forth, how will that particular measure actually inform your decision? Because this is admittedly a very large list of measures, and it doesn't really help, it begs a greater focus.
So, so thank you for that, but what I would love to see is for Durin to be having direction from the Board, more direction from the Board as opposed to the direction coming from Durin through the data about where, this, I just think that it would be easier for you, as the school administrator, to be able to develop a budget and know what the priorities of our community are, if we are more focused on the future, where we want to see our kids succeeding. And so I recognize we can use this, and so can Durin, but I think that we should be directing a little more.
Well, that's what I was asking you for. I mean, this is too long a list, so what are the ones that are really important? Which are the ones that are going to inform the public and add value to the education, the perception of the value that the community finds in the education we're providing? Now, a couple of these with the asterisk really are new, admittedly, because they're mandated. You know, you go to the second page and you say, "Report on Flexible Pathways," well, that's, you know, that's something that's going to happen. Now, the question is, report on it. What are the parameters? What are the things you want to see in that, in that report that are going to be indicated? Lyndal, ask me.
Yeah, this is a way out-of-the-box question. Maybe very sketchy. I keep...
It's good. We like it.
Well, you haven't heard it, too. I keep looking for ways to integrate, like, the personalized learning plans or what our student member brought up last time about the peer reviews. How can we integrate that into these visions for the Board? Because it has to be a whole, in my mind. I keep looking for that somehow. It can't be just the Board and the administration. I don't know how, maybe that's too big a question, but I keep looking for that to come together somehow.
Pull it all together.
Yeah, yeah. What's happening with the changes in the students identifying their learning plans and what their visions are for themselves, and how we can somehow incorporate that into this is, I feel as a Board member, it's very important to know that level of vision and decision, and I can't seem to get at it. Sorry, we keep throwing all these questions.
Well, I would like, I would like to respond to what you just said, because it really strikes a chord today. But I do want to, but before I do that, I want to say that all of the data that is reported to the Board and more is reviewed by the Counseling Department, the Administration, the whole Educational Support staff, and much of it is shared with Leland and Gray faculty as well. We need to know the percentages of boys and girls in middle school and high school in co-curricular activities, because if it drops to 25%, that has a budgetary impact. That has, that has an impact on the school climate, and it would be noticeable by the community, just, you know, in a public way. So we use this all the time. So I can say that, you know, that we have 28 kids with 504, so we have 64 kids with EST plans, that there's about 62 students with IEDs. I need to know this, because it makes up a third of the whole student body. I couldn't do daily decision-making without the, sort of, the analysis of the data in me. So when I said to the faculty today, when they were concerned that the S-BAC scores in English Language Arts were not reflective of our student performance, look at the SAT scores, and I could say to them, Leland and Gray is not as successful in the SAT scores as we would like them to be, whether it's because more students are participating than in years past, or, I mean, it's slightly higher than the national average, but national average is not hard to beat. Compared to the Vermont average, it fluctuates a lot. And also looking at the timing of when students taking it, and I could just talk about that data, and then anyone who wanted it, I just sent it to them, said, "See for yourself." So the S-BAC is more valid than perhaps at first blush. Now, to go back to the, your question, so in our in-service today, our special educator and literacy reading specialist, Bruce Rosso, presented for two-thirds of the day with Michelle Monks-Manton about teaching, reading to students who struggle in reading. And he broke down from the very beginning about how language works. He showed us all these phonetic symbols that foreigners learn when they learn foreign, you know, romance, not romance languages, but languages that use the Roman alphabet, you know, like the symbol, symbol of the and was and things like that. And it became very clear why so many of our students struggle with some of the most basic things in class, because if we're giving them even high-school-level reading, it could be as, I mean, according to Bruce's statistics, half to two-thirds of students are reading way below grade level all over the country. And if a student grows up in a low-income family, it's much more pronounced, so then it's only a third who are reading on grade level. And 46% of our students are eligible for reduced meals, so literally, it's possible that half of a class, or 40% of a class, are students who are struggling readers. So just the, just even handing out the directions, handing out, and that is consistently what I hear from teachers concerned that we have introduced and actually fully implement now, reading and writing across the curriculum while you have to write in PE class, and, and yet, we're not making the progress we need to. And that's what today's in-service was about. How that could, so how that could translate, how I hope it translates to personalized learning plans, is that students see their S-BAC scores. Half the students in Grade 7, 8, and 11 will see, "I didn't pass the reading test for," basically a national, nationally standardized reading test. "I need to write in my personalized learning plan that I need reading interventions, even though I may be 16, 17, 18 years old."
Gee, well, that would be part of the goal and the vision, I think, for the Board to take a look at, yeah.
But it would be a massive undertaking.
Yeah, oh, yes, yes.
And also, if we, I mean, we'll want to, we will want to be talking about this, grappling with this quickly, because first of all, how many high school students want reading instruction? They're so used to kind of, like, was it like a duck and cover of work with my friend, find out another way, watch the movie, do something else other than actually being able to comp, what leads to comprehension, and all the contextual information, the background knowledge they need to have in order to understand the information. It's, it's a, it's a major endeavor, but it's a life-changing endeavor.
See, I would almost like, oh, sorry.
So I just wanted to say, so the, so there's budget implications for that as well, because right now, our staff devoted to this pursuit, they almost only work with special needs students, and that's not true. I mean, we don't have, we only have 16% of our kids who are eligible for special education, as opposed to perhaps 50% who need some kind of reading intervention. We're not talking about just assistance and breaking down the text. Sometimes you probably get chunked text where it's like, you read some, answer the question, or it's in some kind of grid.
Not since, like, ninth grade.
No, you haven't? Okay. We've been to pretty challenging classes.
Yeah, that's true.
Are, are our elementary school kids coming in with these same issues, or?
Well, clearly, we're getting kids from...
You know, because maybe it starts not with us, and it's not with Leland and Gray. It's a Wyndham Central situation.
Well...
And it starts way earlier than here, and we're behind the curve trying to fix it.
Well, if a 16-year-old isn't reading, then you know, or not reading to grade level, then you know that didn't start at 16.
Right.
And I think it's just, it's...
Yeah, we can look at a system pre-K through 12 with that eye. That, we have to hold accountable the elementary schools. I have to hold the principals and staff, those schools accountable. In fact, the S-BAC data for the elementary schools is quite good compared to the state, and in fact, extraordinary in a couple of cases. So, but those kids are not yet here, okay? And that's the result of an investment by the school districts in fonus and penile reading and addressing a consistent reading approach instructional across pre-K through 6.
Because we should be at a point where we're able to do much more advanced stuff with these kids than...
Well, they're going to, they're going to come along. Certainly, the six, rising six, the sixth grade coming to the seventh grade, coming to the seventh grade this year certainly had quite respectable performance.
So Emily, you were, your concern was, these are too far out?
Well, well, here's what, especially in light of this conversation, here's what is a little more concern of mine, and that is that we're spending an awful lot of time at these meetings, and these tend to go on a long time, talking about these specific details, when that's really not up to us.
Right.
We don't even need to know. As much as I think it's really important that we get the data, and we, if we have questions about it, we ask you, but we spend a lot of time talking about things like that, instead of being the Board that we are and saying what we want the outcomes to be. And so I'm a little concerned that we're going at it from the other way around, and part of it is because we're being, we're being given data, which is appropriate, and we should have that data, but we're not, we don't have anything to apply it to. We're not saying, how are we holding our administration and our, accountable to our communities and our kids? And, and so I would just say that I think we need to start talking about how we're going to look at it from a different perspective. If we're going to spend all of our time talking about 16-year-olds who are reading below their grade level, I think we're not getting to the point of what a role of a Board is. And I think the Board should be able to actually have meetings that are, let me, we were just saying how it'd be great if we had our meetings get done in an hour and a half, which a good Board can easily do in any given month, but we spend an awful lot of time talking about the details and not actually setting the direction and asking for, you know, accountability from not just the school administration, but also the district administration, the SU administration, which is really clearly a part of this. I mean, it's certainly not just at Leland and Gray. So I would just, I hope we'll think like this and try to figure out how we're going to apply all of this to what our future needs are, because we're running a deficit again, and we seem to be doing that every year, and it does seem that we're, our outcomes aren't where they should be, and I think we need to be stepping up and giving better direction about what our expectations are.
Okay, so just make, excuse me, just, I just want to make sure you understand that Durin, and I have reviewed this, really made every effort to respond to the request for measures on the 2020 goals, okay? Now, maybe we misinterpreted that, or we should not be spending time on that, and the Board should be directing what those are, which is fine with me, but I just want you to know that in good faith, that's what we did.
Can I clarify that? Because at the last meeting, what I had suggested was that the Board was going to take these goal, these visions, that we had developed last year, and I would, I had hoped that we would all meet and have a conversation about how we're going to put a timeframe around that and put it into context, working with certainly the administration on this. The measures would come after we had already done that.
After that, I agree.
So I'm not, I'm not criticizing, and I think it's fantastic that you took the time to actually do that, but I think that, you know, the Board has a responsibility here, and we need to step up to it.
I just want to say, my question went way far afield. It wasn't on the specifics, but thank you for sharing. My question was, can we somehow have a comparable student vision that will mesh with the Boards? I wasn't, I wasn't, Durin was right. I've been very concerned about these indicators that you're talking about, but that wasn't my question right now. It was wondering if there's some way to have the student body. I don't know how you would feel. It may be too difficult, not, not, not because you're students, but just too difficult to do. Do you see what I'm saying? I think it would help the Board a lot to have, if you could have a mechanism, to have student vision, and is that coming out of some mechanism? Never, never, don't, let's not get into the details again of what's not happening or happening. That was why I thought it was sort of sketchy, what I was asking.
I think if we have our goals in place, the students will certainly be taken front and center in that.
Okay.
I would hope that that's a conversation.
I just want to lose a student voice in what they see as important.
You know, all Boards don't have a student on their board, and we do, so I think that we're already at one step ahead.
That's why I was asking about personalized learning plans and that peer review. There's seen mechanisms, and I heard that from you last meeting, that there are ways students communicate within the system that isn't necessarily coming here. Never mind. We've got a lot else to talk about.
We talked to our student council about the responsibility of Chloe and Julian
Of a vision.
As members of the Board and the communication.
That would help me as a Board member.
Between the student council and the Board.
Yeah.
Vice versa, through them. Do you want to speak to that?
That would be great.
Maybe respond to what Lyndal's requesting.
Yeah, I'm just seeing us as a little dissociated from what the student vision is.
Right. We had, the day before school started, we had a student council retreat. Sure, if that's what it's called. We had a student council retreat. Mostly, I think, mostly everyone was there, except for maybe like five kids on, of all of high school student council. We had a very long discussion about the students not hearing what's been happening on student council, what's been happening on the School Board, and also how the students have been feeling like they haven't really had a voice. I think part of it is miscommunication between those of us that are on, like, me and Julian being on the School Board and all the members of student council. I think it's been a miscommunication of us not really sharing what we've been doing, which we had a lot of ideas to change things like that. I think also, one of the problems with student voice is that a lot of them, a lot of the students in the school say that they have all these things that they want to talk about, and they have all these things that need to be done, and they're either extremely unrealistic things that can't be done, or they're something that they're not actually willing to fight for. And I do really think that the peer review process was super good for everybody in the school. A lot of kids said that it was really helpful that they, to be able to get their word out like that. Something I suggested was starting a school newspaper. I think that we could have like a student column and a student council column, and they could be two different things. We could have a School Board column if we wanted. I just think it would be a really great way for everyone to be able to express what they need to get out.
Yeah, that's helpful. That's good. Thank you. So, moving right along.
I wanted to ask something from Stephen and Durin primarily. Do we have any historic data on Leland and Gray's performance in various standardized testing across the state, across the country, over not just the last couple of years, but like 10 years, 20 years?
I could dig. I used to prepare such reports 10 years ago from the school here.
I know the type of testing changes.
Yeah, they were different. They were different. You're right, yeah.
Because the reason I bring this up is that, you know, we live in times that are very different than when you and I grew up.
Different fiber, different world.
You know, just, as a, as a general statement, people don't read as much as they used to. And I don't feel like it's...
Certainly true.
It's fair to blame, to put it as a shortcoming of the education system, because reading abilities are not what they used to be, because people just don't read. People don't write. People use technology, they use shorthand, a lot of shortcuts, and just this whole concept of sitting for an hour and reading quietly a book is something that is disappearing. Our brain is changing. And as a result, you know, I think, I'm sure that some of that is reflected in the test results that we're seeing, when P, when, when high school kids don't have the proper level of reading and writing, for example.
Okay, well, yeah, I think that is certainly a conclusion that, you know, it can be drawn anecdotally from what we see in the news and what we see around us. Actually, the research on books is kind of interesting. The advent of technology predicted that there would no longer be a market for books, and there would be no, or a market for writers, but in fact, there's more market for writers and more market for books. The booksellers are doing all right, but it's a different kind of sale than the community store selling the book, you know? It's online. Now, the problem is that we... Now, the problem is that we kind of, in terms of research, we have to be careful as we move from, you know, the slate to paper and pencil, from paper and pencil to the computer, to electronic technology, that, you know, we, we understand that it's a different medium, you know, it has an effect. And, and the good thing about the most recent test is that it is online with the computer. So it parallels the experience that most students have today with accessing information, which is mean, it doesn't mean they don't write or read, but it's in a different medium. And there is not as high a value for, well, let me say that, I will say from my own teaching experience, that's been forty-some years, if you took a third grader when I first taught and looked at their writing compared with the average third grader now, you'd find a very high, much higher level of writing at the third grade level and sixth grade level. That's because of the, in Vermont anyway, the portfolio assessment process. And, and actually, if you talk to most kids, they'll know what a hypothesis is, or what a hook is, or what a conclusion is, or a summary, or what an argument is, or development of an argument. Twenty years ago, kids didn't know that. Maybe Lyndall could say what she thinks about education way back, but...
Fifty years.
Yeah, anyway, I'm just trying to caution us against jumping to the conclusion that, that the society and the societal changes are entirely, are primarily responsible for the, for the, the performance we face here or we see at the moment. There's no doubt that Leland and Gray has changed demographically. Although we may claim, those of you who've been around long enough time, that we had just as many kids in poverty as we do now, the burden of poverty, the separation between the rich and the poor is widening in this country, and we are not excluded from that, immune from that. And so that, those are factors. I, I certainly, if, I want to, I want to make sure that if I'm directed to find this information, that we know how it's going to inform what we're going to do in the future, Baman. It's a curiosity and a valid question. And in fact, I can compare over those many years, averages of averages against the nation and the state and so forth. But I don't know that we're going to find a trend in it, and if we found a trend in it, it would be deemed invalid by anybody under the hood because they know the tests are different.
Can I say a quick word? Sure. If, if we're focused on not what our kids are doing, but as a board focused on what our children need to know when they leave Leland and Gray to be college and career ready, we won't need to worry about any of those things. We need to say, what, we need to recognize what our kids need to know to be successful when they leave. Once we've done that, we should be able to turn this over to the administration and the professionals in this building to be able to, and, and not just in this building, obviously, in the education system. And, and make sure that's done.
Well, and no child left behind is an effort at doing that politically.
Whether they read less or, or more, it's irrelevant in my mind as long as they're getting what they need to be successful. And we have new, a new EQS that tells us what children need to be successful.
Education quality standards are the...
One framework around that, and there's plenty of others. So I would hope that we would focus, that's the, that's the point I'm trying to make. The board should be making sure that we are putting the guidelines in there about making sure our kids are successful.
May I say something?
Sure.
I, I'm wondering if perhaps, if, when, when a principal's report is being created, it's very informative, they're all very informative, and they're wonderful information, and if there could be something in it that reminds us what part of our goals this satisfies.
Once we make our goals.
And that, and that, that is, then we're like, okay, yeah, no, because we've, I think we forget to relate to our goals as well as, and that's how we get caught into these little discussions.
Do we have goals? That's a vision, that's totally...
I think it might be interesting to ask yourselves as board members, I think it's raising a good situation, your discussion between Emily and Patty on this. You look at number one and read it, is it a goal? Or is it an aspiration? Is it a vision? You know, and, and in order to reduce that to something that is measurable or a goal, I think is the point that Emily's trying to make, and actually a challenge to all of you as individual representative communities to, to consider that and, and contribute to it. I have to say that I felt, you know, and certainly worked with Durin to say, look, we got to have measures for these outcomes that we see, these visions, okay? But I understand that they're not, you know, this is a list of an example of really an unmanageable number of goals and reports, and reports don't get things done. Reports, you know, report on things that have been done or not done. And so, you know, I really enthusiastically endorse any effort by the board to be more specific in terms of holding administration accountable around specific goals, be they, just saying that the EQS is not enough either. You know, we have to be specific about areas of the EQS that we want to focus on and what shape it should be, and that can be a recommendation from us based on the performances we see. But then the actual articulation of the goal should be properly, the board and the public's.
So short of having another all-day meeting, which it's a tough time of the year to be doing that, could we do a thing where we all have some homework and we...
Goals are written, not, yeah, I mean, you have to make a decision about, those aren't written by individual boards, they're written by a board.
That's right, yeah, you, you have to meet.
They're written by who?
Well, you, yeah, you have to meet collaboratively, but there can be a draft that's put together by the chair based on your input. It doesn't have to take a lot of time, but it is important to have something committed to writing, because right now, tonight, we actually fortunately have been provoked to this discussion by a lot of writing regarding measures, and gives you some context from which to work.
But we could all submit thoughts about...
Well, you can, I mean, you, you, your idea about the homework is true. You're going to have more productive board meetings and get somewhere if you actually individually thought about it and have something to say or articulate, and then if those come together at the meeting, you can do that. You can't be really sharing your opinions apart from the board meetings, that's, that's a problem.
No, no, but you, everybody had, because, I mean, it took us all day to come up with these.
And it's a, and it was a huge amount of work, and I think that we have a good solid base to go forward with, but I do think it's going to take some time and effort on the board, part of the board. I don't think that, given it's September, and our CFO isn't even here tonight to talk about the end-of-year report, my guess is that we're not going to have time, and Durin's probably already deep into her beginning of the budget, so I don't think it's going to inform this year's budget very much unless we're going to be meeting immediately.
Yeah, no, I, I think it can have an effect on the budget. The budget process goes through to December.
So then, then what you're saying is that we should be meeting between now and December to have a conversation around what our goals are?
Well, then, otherwise, otherwise you got to live with, with this long list of things, of reports and so on. Now, one thing that could help is if you actually looked at those and said, which of those do you value?
Right.
I mean, based on the goals that you have in mind, whether you've articulated them or not. Anyway, I, we're, we're here, here to do as you would like to have done between now and the finalized, and the budget system, and if you think it's impossible to come up with goals. I just wanted to make sure, Emily, that you realize they're going to be the ones that direct, direct the decisions about the budget, and we certainly are responsible to respond flexibly, you know, flexibly and adaptable to whatever those goals are, adaptably.
I think we want to make sure that if we're going to do it, we take the time and have the time to do it right.
Or have one, maybe not have a whole complete set.
Yes, have something that's solid. But is it realistic? I mean, I don't know, is it realistic to think that we can come up with a five-year plan and, and get it all etched in stone by the next meeting?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so, no. And now, another resource that you can look at individually for your homework is what's the action plan of the school for school improvement? That has specific goals. They're posted, they're online. Probably none of us have them committed to memory except Durin, but...
I reported on them from last year, and they're, they're pretty similar this year. So much of it is...
Now, if those goals don't fit with this vision in your opinion, or they need to be more specific or clearer, then, you know, that's, I'm just trying to give you a way to start on this, without feeling like it's just an overwhelming responsibility.
Probably the greatest difference is that it focuses first on English, Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science, and I don't think any of those particular subject areas are emphasized, you know, or are mentioned, just...
Specifically in the vision.
Agreed, and that's because it's a vision, not a specific...
It's a vision.
Right, right. But I didn't, in no way do I see the documents in contradiction, they focus on different areas. And to, and then a little bit to different audiences, because the, the school improvement plan, which is almost the same as our school action plan, school action plan is for our Title I funding. We get about $150,000 a year for the Title I funding for remediation and supports. And then the improvement plan we have to have is part of virtually every other school in America, is part of each other's plan, so. Yeah, those are much more about goals than a vision. It's not a vision.
Right.
And they're reported to our community every year, or annual report.
So we don't think that these actually, these Goal One, Goal Two, that these actually work with our vision?
No, I think they do, it just applies different information. So actually, to focus on those three subject areas that I mentioned in the vision is, in a sense, redundant, because it's already in the action plan and the, in a sense, the fundamental of any public school that you're going to provide as top-quality education you can in those three essential areas. And then Leland and Gray has, you know, the expansion, like in Number Four, the vibrant visual informing arts program, Five, the investment in teachers' professional learning, I mean, that's part of the, more vision talk.
So could we look at these goals that, from this annual report as possibly agreeing that these will drive the budget?
And, you know, it's pretty obvious to me that one of the problems we're dealing with is that we have too many goals and too many, too many measures, and so it's hard to focus, but, you know, the measures should come later after you've figured out what the goals are. And as Emily says, and I, there's danger in being too narrow, but I think this, this discussion has raised a concern that we aren't specific enough from the board perspective as to what to hold the school system accountable for, maybe the administration.
Well, and to be fair, it was appropriately mentioned by Durin in last month's report, you know, that the, the vision statement that we've made and, and all of that wasn't really, didn't really help her to move forward in the way that she needed, and I think that we need to make sure that we're doing that.
Okay.
Well, you know, when I looked at it much more closely, that was because I was relying on the existing data, and what we need to report to, for the educational quality review, do you know if the quantitative aspect of that is going to happen this year for every school?
No, I can't confirm that.
Okay.
There's a pilot going on, but I don't know.
Right, and I don't know if the pilot...
Pilot presumably would be, but...
But I don't know if the pilot is quantitative or qualitative, so this is two different aspects.
Since they don't have an accurate baseline, at least one that they have confidence in with the S-PAC administration last spring, it's hard to imagine that they can go quantitative. You know, compared to what? It is focused on growth, and that's...
Yeah, that's true.
But for example, as part of that, when we do have to do the educational quality review, say, two, three years down the road from the Agency of Education, we do need to report on our flexible pathways, on our personalized learning plans, the, the, so that, so those are the two, among the two most significant new reports that we haven't generated before. So that was a real match for the board's vision as well as the educational quality standards and the review of how each school is complying with those standards. So, and is that true of, say, One D specifically about technology, computer science? I don't think so. I think that they, I don't think that the state would drill down to that level of specificity. So that might, just for an example, or Goal Three about engaging in diverse studies and activities, so a new combined report of more exciting things that happen around school that aren't reported as of yet, such as the relief environmental club, I mean, we don't report on these to the board. I don't think that the state is going to be asking for that information. It does ask that we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum that is articulated, meaning in writing, and that we have established without this. So, and there is not an Atlas report, but instead, at this point, the portal has been made public and, and anyone can go through our school website and see Leland and Gray's curriculum. So I don't know if that helps inform the conversation, or am I just muddying the mortar some more?
No, but I, you mean, help just pass it back to you.
So if you want to do it on that basis alone and just say, you know, we really don't need those two other reports that the EQR won't be asking for, that would cut down on some work. Just be pragmatic.
Which was, I'd be great.
Yeah.
But also, we have worked it too.
Yeah, the point is, I hope the conclusion of this conversation is not reduce our workload, administrative workload, the question is to make sure that we're working collaboratively as under director of the board to really meet the goals and to make sure those goals are clear and supported by your communities and are more effective.
More effectively do our leadership role.
Yeah, yeah.
Is which I get... What Emily's saying. Yeah.
So the sequence would be, you have the vision, you have the goals specifically, maybe we just start with one, and then you have the measures, which we would come up with what we think are measurable or outcomes that we can measure, what would be indicative, and then the board can consider whether those seem reliable or appropriate.
So do you think it's reality-based, that we could dedicate a whole meeting to that
Well, I think your window of opportunity is your next meeting.
Right. For the budget, yes. Definitely. October thirteenth. And if we all...
I don't see why that's not a doable meeting.
Okay.
We've got everything but a goal, and we just basically need to articulate the goal that's already basically spelled out by the vision and where we're going for measures and just come up with more of a timeline and more specifics if we want to drive, to try to meet hurdles. I mean, it's, it's just taking, taking a lot of vague language and putting some specifics to it. I can't imagine, see, if we just focused on that and didn't get sidetracked a lot of reading in the high school, middle school, you know, collectively, my assumption would be we could talk about that.
Yeah. Okay, so for next meeting, if we could all put a lot of thought into...
Hey, guys.
Sorry. I'm making a suggestion for our next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I wasn't going to make it out loud until I suggested to Stephen, so I'll let him think about it.
Yeah, I've taken something under advisement about how we might have someone facilitate the discussion at the next meeting.
That would be a wonderful idea.
But that doesn't give you the reason to lay off of the intellectual engagement individually between them and them.
No, no, yeah, yeah, if everybody puts thought into it through this month and comes prepared to...
Some, some very basic guideline, we, when we talk goals, are we talking like making students lifelong learners, or are we talking being comfortable with differential equations?
I'd say somewhere in between.
Yeah, more specific than lifelong learners, but not as specific as...
Yeah. If you take the, I think if you look at the action plan goals and you look at the vision you've got, okay, I think... you've got, okay, I think that that gives you some idea about what might work.
While they're not updated, I think that it's still important that we stay focused on Windham Central as well, and we have a strategic plan.
Strategic goals there. Now, those are, those are broad, they're big, but, but, you know, that gives you an idea of something that probably is not the most effective and workable at this level. But it, you know, it is something we should do.
But if we're not aware of a pre-K-12 education system, we're not going to be getting our job right.
That should be part of our thought process.
So there are three sources to look at, and if the public's interested out there, these are all online, you can look for them as well and advise your representatives so that the next meeting can, we can...
Maybe I can get a few examples of what other schools have done, you know, around goals, and send them to you and Joe and see if there's something that you'd be interested in sharing, you and Durin.
Randolph.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's public documents out there that might help.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. It does help to work from something. Now, I think that what I'm going to do then is work with the board chairs and specifically Patty now, since she's chaired this discussion, and see if we can't come up with some more, more, actually, formative questions so that you, to send out to you as board members. That's not that you respond back, you're just thinking about this stuff to kind of prime the pump a little bit, so that you come with, with some, some perspective and wisdom at the next meeting, and then we'll put it together to collectively arrive at perhaps, for the first time, some, some goals that are, are going to press forward with the progress that we want to see, the growth we want to see with all of our students, every single one.
And to facilitate the budget toward that direction.
Well, it'll prep, yeah, that's exactly right, because that will help prioritize, you know, you can look at all these goals in the big, or the sheet that Durin pointed out, the measures, and you can see where there could be an investment rationalized for each and every one individual, one of those things. But you know there isn't enough cake on the table to spread around, to give that many slices out. Somebody remember my chocolate cake?
Sure do. It was delicious.
So you and I are going to work together?
Yeah, yeah, give me a call and we'll, we'll try to put something together.
And then we'll have something to send out and, and resources, a list of resources to send out to the board members to help them?
Yes, that's right, ahead of the next meeting. And let's keep in mind that, that we'll keep in mind Baumann's question about what the board really, as they consider this individually, seeks is some kind of format or idea of where it is in that broad spectrum of, I forgot what you said, the algebra, the differential equations and the, and everybody's going to be lifelong learner, right? Yeah.
Right. Okay. So we'll watch for that, and everybody's homework is to put some thought process into it and come up with some questions and...
Yeah. Great, that's a great rule definition, and I just can't help because of my entering the philosophical stage of life that the, the challenge of public education in the States is to keep both of those in mind, Baumann. You know, we have many goals, and, you know, we can only focus on so many at one time. But on the other hand, the challenge is to be inclusive in a democratic society of all of those. That's, that's quite a paradox. That's mine.
Let's ask one last question to Durin, totally unrelated. Does the school still have Career Day?
We did have Career Day. I think it was the year before last. It was organized by our co-op teacher. It was a very full, busy day. And it's not something that we can manage every year because we have dozens of people coming in. It's six months of planning essentially to make it happen. And so now that this is the, the other year, since we didn't do it last year, I think the timing is right to do it this spring. We were probably freshmen that year, do you remember?
Yeah.
You want to talk about what it was like?
I personally didn't really get that much out of it, to be completely honest. I mean, it might, just because I'm me and there wasn't much there that really interested me in what I want to do. There was a lot there though, and I'm sure that a lot of the kids, I know for a fact that a lot of the kids that did, that they were very interested in a couple of the things that were there, so I don't see it hurting at all. I see it benefiting quite, quite a few students, honestly, but personally, I can't really say much to it.
The reason I ask is that if there is going to be another one, I would really like to introduce some people who could make a presentation about IT careers in IT.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, I think all of the board will be asked for their suggestions once we prepare for that. I also think this fits in with personalized learning plans again. It's, it would contribute in the spring to kids deciding on their plans and how it connects with what they have in terms of aspiration for work in the future.
Okay, so we're all set on that topic? Anybody else? Anything else? Good discussion. Thank you, Chloe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chloe.
Good discussion, I think. This is going to be very helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Well, have mercy on you. I don't have a formal report regarding the administrative retreat. We certainly had a very full two and a half days. What I wanted to mention specifically was though that this segued into the personalized learning, sorry, professional learning community protocols, which is a toolbox of protocols to have a formal discussion or a productive discussion in a structured way about dilemmas, challenges that face educators. Are you familiar with that at all?
Okay.
Yeah. So what I have obliged annually is that all new employees, all new teachers are taking this course for two days. So that happened, and I always attend that course because I want to get to know the new folks, and they should learn something about it too. So, that, that happened at craft and continuing that week that started out with the retreat. The opening day, I did want to focus on though, the theme of the opening day, as you saw, I think I shared remarks with you, was really, and the agenda was really on questions, on, you know, really, all learning being based on curiosity and questions and asking the right hard questions, just as we were reflecting here just now, I learned quite a bit. And I did, you know, I did step out a little bit and, you know, spoke in Malay with my pink bodhu on with the plaid purple skirt and made quite a scene with some people. And I wanted to create a situation for the teachers to remind them of a situation that all kids face in the first day, and that is one of ambiguity, not knowing what's going on and wondering what the heck is going on and what the expectations are. So, we had a nice follow-up question and answer time after that. And then we used a professional, professional learning communities protocol to look at the Sback scores across the SU at grade level, and, and that was in mixed groups, randomly mixed, so we had people from all over different schools in groups of 10. And they were obliged by the protocol to listen to each other. And I suggest this as something I recommend when you're dealing with an interesting set of data or a problem, is that you take turns speaking to your initial observation or curiosity about the information, and that, in the group, you allow a minute for each person, and if they don't take the minute, which rarely we do, we just sit in silence and reflect on that comment before we speak. We're too often jumping to the defense or to the me-too or the explanation. So, that was, trying to share with you the experience of that first day that I hope benefits all of our teachers in terms of looking at that data and taking appropriate steps as indicated. That's not me. I thought I turned my, and, because, because we expect that information has only one purpose, such this assessment information has only one purpose, that's to drive the cycle of inquiry so that there's a change in the instruction to then seek a better and promote a better outcome, more learning. Questions? I know it's brief and oral, but that's about all I can manage right now. Had a lot of scrambling around. I did get around every single classroom, every single school, and on the first week, the first three days, and I can report for all of the staff, a very favorable start in each school and very positive one, and I commend everybody for their efforts to make that possible, including parents who set their kids up for success.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And Chief Financial Officer's report.
So I can, yeah, I can take that up. You've got the report. There is one correction, if you look at it, there is an over, it's over budget in counseling specifically, sorry, in principal's office, and under budget in counseling.
In which pages?
Well, I don't have the pages numbered either. If somebody knows what I'm talking about, tell us a page.
One, two, three.
Page it's on.
Plutus.
It's a line item for...
Counselor.
Counseling is on the, it's about the fifth lineup.
Twenty-one, twenty.
One of twenty-one, twenty is the number that might help you find it, and it's on page one of two. And then the principal, where's the principal administration?
What's the discrepancy in counseling?
Well, hang on, I'm going to tell you. If you look at counseling to begin with, if you can find that twenty-one, twenty, you can see that it's under budget, right?
It's twenty-four hundred on the next page.
You see it was under by thirty-one thousand, seven hundred? Follow me?
Right.
Okay, and then when you go over to Support Services Administration, Durin is the one you're thinking of, once?
Yes.
Okay. So Support Services Administration is on two of two. That's twenty-four hundred, and you can see that that was over by forty thousand. Now, the reason needs, this needs to be corrected as what's called a journal entry, because twenty-five percent of an employee, employee's salary that was supposed to be accounted for in counseling was hundred percent under administration.
Doesn't change the bottom line, just changes where it goes.
That's what I said in the email to everybody tonight, but earlier.
So he'll send, he'll send an updated version?
So there'll be a correction on that, yes.
But the totals are all accurate. It's the money that owns the...
As far as, as far as we know. Now, if you, you know, you're looking at this and certainly want to ask questions, as is your proper role, you know, I certainly want to have them conveyed through me to the CFO or directly to Bud Devanis. But, yeah, that's the only correction I want to thank Durin for looking into that and making sure we have that clarified tonight.
I have a question.
Yes.
And this is because I'm not an accountant, I'm sure, but...
Pretty hard to follow this report.
Some, some is, is expenses, the other is revenue, right? And the revenue is all in parentheses, to me that means a negative.
Yeah.
So I'm not quite sure what two negatives make, you know, in that...
Okay, well, it is true.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Follow up with what Patty's saying, because I, even though I've been doing this for a really long time, I struggle with this new reporting system, okay? So I sent an email to Joe when we received this and said, please make sure that Bud's going to be here. I know he's sick, so he couldn't be here, but, and that I hope he's going to be prepared to report on this to us before, you know, so that, so maybe some of our questions would get answered, because it's really hard to follow. I mean, we all know under the revenue that tuition Athens is not, you know, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. There's, there's things like this that are really challenging to, for us to understand.
A layperson.
And I think it's critically important that the board understands every single line item in here and understands the why and wherefore of how we got to where we are. And so, you know, the, the final is, it looks like, again, we're running another deficit.
Yes, that certainly is.
And so I think it's really, really important that in this third, I think, or maybe even fourth year of running, third at least year of running a deficit, if not fourth, that we make sure we recognize where we're not appropriately budgeting, and that, because this is our job, folks, you know? We need to make sure we get this, and I'm not sure that the board is thoroughly understanding this, especially in the way it's being reported to us, which is so different than the way it's been reported in the past because it's a new software program, so, or the system is different. So I'm not sure how to address that, and I, you know, yes, parentheses are negative, but in some cases in here, I don't think they are, so it's, that's why I...
I have to do this with every board with this new reporting system. Separate the front page, the front page is revenues. Now, you can tell me not to, you can tell Bud and me not to report on revenues, but it is important to report on revenues. But from an accountant point of view and the way a reporting system is set up, whether I like it or not, I've tried to get this to change, it's in parentheses, which means the income you expect to get. See, when you budget eight hundred ninety-nine thousand on that first one, that's your, that's on your, in your books, not Athens. In your book, it's tuition revenue, okay? And it's listed on the first line there, and if you note on the next column, you add up all those numbers. They're pretty close to eight hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars because that's where it's split out from the different towns. But the entry from the, we, we did not put the entry for the tuitions, anticipated tuitions specific to the towns. Now, that's a clarification, it could be done when we enter it.
Certainly when it says Athens, which isn't one of our towns, I think it's really deceiving. And I mean, this is a public document and it needs to be understood and understood by the community as well. And so I, we asked about this the last time we saw it as, as Athens, and I remember him saying, oh yeah, that's not correct and we need to fix it, but it's not been fixed and I'm...
And Wardspurrows actual is not seven hundred and thirty-six. That'd be great if it was, but...
Right.
So I just really, I kind of, my eyes crossed.
So the front page is not helpful at all, or at least it's misrepresenting things at this point in your view. That's good.
No, it's just not clear. I'm not saying any of the numbers are inaccurate. I think some of the headings are not correct. I know some of them are not correct. And I think that if Bud were here, he would have been able to explain those things to us. We could have shared with him what our concerns were about how we didn't, why we didn't understand, and then maybe he could have made those corrections. So I'm hoping that will happen at some point. I don't know how to do this without Bud being here, is all I'm saying. I, I really don't, because I think it's unfair to ask you to go and relay our specifics when we don't even know what they are if we haven't had a report back from the CFO who wrote this.
I mean, it appears we did not take in as much as we...
Correct. Our revenue was certainly lower than what we anticipated, and it's a question we need to be aware of.
Okay. Now, the other, let's take the other two pages. What's the feedback on that? You said that is also hard to read. What's the, what's the suggestion for improving it there?
Which one are we looking at?
I'm looking at the expenditures.
Oh, no, I, I mean, I was okay with that.
One of two.
It's just all those.
It's also confusing about the pages.
Yeah, and I agree. I have a one of one here, and I'm not sure the breakdown between this and these, they're all expenditures. I, you know, I think it would be very, I would have asked Bud to explain this to us and I'm...
Yeah, because we have two, two, one on...
I mean, I certainly got the bottom line, which was our estimated fund balance was negative one hundred and forty-two thousand.
Right.
But, but I'd like to know.
It'd be nice to know more of the detail.
And I, I, you know, one of my questions was, we did pay off some of our deficit from last year, is that applied here? I don't know, because this is audited fund balance, so...
Fourteen.
You know, but that should be adjusted back down, I think, because we budgeted for...
Yes.
Paying off some of that. So I, I really need to know, and I can't ask you or Durin, I would need to ask Bud because he's the one who runs these numbers, and the way it's reported here isn't completely clear to me as to how. I thought we had paid it down another seventy or something? I can't remember. So anyway, I'm not sure what our end of the year...
We purposely set up a budget that was going to pay back half of the...
Clearly, our audited fund balance is a negative one hundred and fourteen, but then we had budgeted, and I'm not sure where it is in here to pay off our fund balance.
Maybe even if this is the way it needs to be reported, that there be some explanation on each page, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I had, I had sent an email to Joe asking if Bud could be prepared to respond to all these questions and, and to, you know, go through this line by line for us so we completely understand what we're looking at, and I think that still needs to happen.
Yeah.
Because we're already now in September, and normally we look at this in July, and we, I've been asking for whether we were going to be running a deficit again this year every single month I've been here. We didn't meet in July, but I asked for it in June if there was an estimate, and I asked for it in August, and there was no estimate then either. And, you know, we close our books in June, and so now we're talking October before we're going to really get an explanation around all this, and we're going to be starting budgeting then. And so, you know, I just hope that the board gets a chance to understand exactly what they're looking at and why. the board gets a chance to understand exactly what they're looking at and why.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, I'm actually gonna suggest that those who are knowledgeable and to ask the questions that I direct Bud to call you, see what the issue is. That would help prepare for a proper explanation at the next meeting. That would be my intention, not to, not to try to take care of this.
Understood, but I would hope that this will get published along with our report, I mean, our agendas and our minutes. And so I wanna make sure that the community has an opportunity to hear the same thing. So I, I don't mind us doing exactly what you said, but I still think that, you know, we need to have this conversation at board meetings.
Yeah, this is supposed to be a month, I mean, the intention is that this will be the format for a monthly...
We had asked for a monthly report, and we don't always get one, but we should, especially in the light of the fact that we're, again, running another deficit. And that really, I, I would be honest with all of you, it really concerns me. And we don't normally, that's not something we've done in the past, and we've been running a deficit every year, and I, I, you know, I had mentioned last year when we were, when we were doing our budget, that we really should be paying off our, this, that was the second year in a row we didn't, we only paid a portion of our deficit. And I, you know, I'm gonna continue to say, I think we are, we need to be responsible to the taxpayers in our budgeting, and I wanna make sure we understand why. If it's all special ed and it's unanticipated, I wanna know that. And it could very well be that, and I saw some of that in here. There was certainly a good portion of that. And if that is true, and if we are, if, if the bulk of what we're running here is unanticipated costs in special education, I think we should have Abby here to explain what some of those are at some point, and then maybe, you know, say which ones of those are, are fully reimbursable, some of them are not. I'd like to know the breakdown, you know, 'cause a lot of that, we will get back, you know, if it's a, you know, it depends on the level of the special ed. And so again, I think that that's something that...
Yeah, there's something here on...
Some is fully reimbursable, some isn't.
Page one on one-of-one account summary report. Um, special ed reimbursement, eligible reimbursement, that was, a parentheses, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Does that mean that that was, we thought it was gonna be reimbursable, and it's not, or...
See, I think that does mean it's eligible for reimbursement, but I'm not sure whether, some of it is fully reimbursable and some of it is, I mean, it depends on the student and where, you know, I mean, there's reasons.
So that was a big chunk of change.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen, the reimbursement for the special education services has already been completed.
Yeah, the report on the front page on, in...
But it's a year out for some of it, the reimbursement.
Well, just compared to what you budgeted in terms of what we anticipated revenue, you can see if the number in the second column is bigger and the percentage is higher, then that means you've got more than what you budgeted.
Right, but my point was that if some of this, if, if, if these are fully one-hundred percent reimbursable and some of our special ed costs are, we won't see them in any of this budget we're looking at. We get it a year later. So it's, it would be helpful to me as a board member to know if that's what we're looking at. And if it's not what we're looking at, then I wanna know that, too. That's all. And I can't tell that from here. Because what Patty said was right. It says eligible for reimbursement, but I'm not sure whether it's, what level of reimbursement.
But the end of FY-15, June thirtieth...
That was for a year ago, for revenue, right? For some of it, because some of it comes a, a year late, right?
I don't think so. I think this is that closing of the books, board.
I agree, but it, but some of the reimbursement we got under this, under revenue in this year, was from the previous year expenses. They aren't in the same year for some students.
That doesn't, that doesn't my understanding, but it does, I suppose there are special cases. I know this state has made a correction from seven years ago with Ward's Borough recently, because they ran out, and it was something to do with the state place students. So I don't deny that there are some possibilities like that.
Well, it seems like we need Bud to help...
Should be answered.
Yeah, to help explain this to us, and then next meeting. Because there's obviously a lot of questions.
Yeah, and obviously, bad news make us more questions.
Yeah.
Your reason to be concerned.
And you wanna be, you wanna know when people come and talk to you and ask you what's up with this.
Yeah.
You wanna be able to explain it instead of, well, I really don't understand all the parentheses, but...
Well, let me, yeah, let me, just to summarize, as Emily said, the bottom line is that you're still running a deficit.
Running a deficit.
And you're gonna have to plan a budget that pays back at least half that deficit. That's the usual advice from any chief financial officer manager. That was Frank's approach forever. So, you know, the question is, to what extent is, is, you know, do changes have to be made to make the, the school sustainable? I mean, that's a sustainability issue.
So...
And if the direction is a goal, you know, I mean, one of the goals that people shy away from is student-teacher ratio. I mean, you know, the...
You know, that's far down the line. I, I don't, you know, I do think that that's a conversation that will need to take place if we can't decide where we're gonna go. I mean, we, we also don't need to pay off half of our deficit. We can pay off as much as we choose to pay off the board.
That is true.
So I mean, it just depends on what our needs are when we're budgeting as well. And we've balanced our needs when we're budgeting, our students' needs in the, in the school, with how much we can afford to pay on a deficit. But when we continue to run deficits, it gets harder and harder. So we, we don't wanna pay off a huge amount of, a full deficit if we have what we know are specific needs that we need to meet in the building. So we get to decide whether we pay off or not.
And we need to know if we're running more of a deficit every year, if it's increasing, or we're keeping up, keeping it at a level.
Well, yeah, if you look at your budget, you, you look at your budget total expenditures, your total planned budget for FY-15, that's going, that's the reported budget that was voted on by the public. That is the, that is the basis upon which the Act forty-six soft cap is going to be applied.
Right.
Now, there may be some things that are exempted from that total.
But he's already updated that for us once. We had that at the last meeting.
No, I have it right here. I was gonna remind the public if they wanna know. But, you know, sixty thousand dollars on a six-million-dollar budget is not very much money. So you're basically talking about level funding everything, or trying to figure out how to use the resources more effectively and efficiently.
Okay, so...
That's our challenge administrative.
Next meeting, Bud's hopefully gonna be able to explain...
Well, in fact, I'm gonna suggest that one or two of you volunteer to be able to share your questions with him by phone, and then he can be better informed as to how he needs to report or revise this report at the next meeting. I mean, you know, I don't really want to have this repeated again. This is an unsatisfactory conversation. I mean, it's not very productive.
No.
But it does reflect the seriousness of the matter, the issues we face.
Well, yeah, it's just not presented for the layperson.
Yeah, so petty. Are you willing to be, you know, giving some advice or being consulted about this, you and Emily perhaps? Because isn't she spoken the most, or you have the most about?
I'll try to give him a call. I work full-time.
No, 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 I would put it the other way around. Give me a, just give me an email about a convenient time, and he could call you.
Well, I'd have to call him because I work all day, and I'm just not sure during the day.
Let me, let me send you an email then to confirm, okay?
How about you just suggest that if anybody has specific questions, that they, you know, email?
Yeah, but the silence will be deathly between now and the next board meeting.
Well, I think that he's going to have, I mean, I'm not, I don't know whether it's gonna be all that helpful, because even if you asked me to tell him that, I'm going to ask questions that I want the whole board to hear. And what's the point of asking him ahead of time? He, he's gonna know.
I'm sure...
I want him to go through line items.
I'll reflect on, I'll reflect what I remember from this conversation, and he can go on video. He can look on video.
I'll try and, yeah, he can watch TV, and I'll try and give him a call.
He can watch TV.
Okay.
We just need to understand, that's all.
So, Wyndham Regional, that's all set. All business, review measures indicators that will inform the public.
I think we talked about that.
Be the status for the board's goals. I think we've kind of covered that, didn't we?
Big time.
Are we all okay with that? We kinda did that?
Yeah, I don't wanna go back there.
Act forty-six implementa, implementation, review. Your meeting on, when was that?
August twenty-sixth.
August twenty-sixth. I sort of watched some of it on TV. It sounded like you were going to plan a meeting to have some of the other SUs get together.
There is a letter being written. I don't think it's actually executed yet, but the chair's gonna write a letter to other SU boards, and, and the idea was to invite them to some kind of a meeting regarding Act forty-six about information. I think the, the best opportunity for networking by the boards now, our boards, has been accomplished by the, the rescheduling of the next full board meeting, which, if you haven't read your email, it's gonna be moved from Wednesday, the twenty-third of September, to a regional Vermont School Boards Association meeting, Southeast Vermont region meeting, regional meeting on the twenty-fourth, the next night, Thursday, at BUHS.
So you did decide to do that.
That looked really helpful.
And that's where the information is. The problem is, we couldn't get a separate presentation of information for our meeting on the twenty-third. So the twenty-fourth will be with, with other board members from other, other parts of the southeast, southeast, southeastern Vermont. I, I certainly appreciate the boards attending that as many board members as possible. It's the intent of my message. And I think it's proven for us to get to that, that opportunity and listen.
I didn't mention, and I think it's important to note, that one of the agenda items that evening is the ed quality review that, that is in place and taking place. So anybody who's interested in that absolutely should make sure they're there for the full portion, because the beginning and the end are about Act forty-six, but there's a segment in the middle that Rebecca Holcomb and Amy Fowler report and on what the status is of the ed quality review process that we'll all be going through, starting right off. And it, I, I found it very, I attended the one in Bennington, so did Laura Sibilla, and I thought that was very interesting, and I think all of you would, too.
And you have to register for that.
Yeah, you wanna get online and make sure RSVP, they need to know the, I put the link in and everything.
Stephen put a link in there. It's easy to get to.
Yeah, I've been working on it quite a bit today. So then, but then there's another meeting. We still wanna have the WCSU Board Retreat Meeting, a full board meeting, and so that's going to happen then, then shifted. Thankfully, Mount, Mount Snow has adjusted their schedule to accommodate us on October twenty-eighth. And you understand, I signed a contract, a commitment to this kind of use of the facility and meal. So that's something to put on your calendar now for the twenty-eighth, and we were gonna have a meeting anyway in October sometime, so that's, that's a time when there are no other board meetings. Both those dates are not conflicted by any other board meetings presently scheduled, so I hope you can all attend both those meetings, and do sign up online. Some of you have done so already, so thank you so much. The otherwise forty-six, I, I do have this timeline. I can't recall. If you haven't seen this as a board, this shows the different timeline of, of implementation of Act forty-six. Take one and pass it on if you want one for your reference. It's pretty, it's pretty clear, actually, and helpful, because if you go, it is online.
It's nice to have it on paper, though.
Let's get the paper to park.
Won't we do that? There you go.
Get people in trouble. And you can see, if you wanna mark it, the first, the first top row is really the accelerated, where the most money incentive is in there, but they're only about nine or ten, I don't know. There are not too many SUs that are really in any way approaching readiness to have a vote of their public on that. And so, but I know there's some members of our WCSU board who feel that's still a possibility and want to be asking about that. So that's there. Then you have the next one. Conventional mergers really refers to, if you write this in, to Act one fifty-six. The Red and the Mud Modified Unified Union School District, that's an option that was explored before when the act was originally passed by you and the five-member towns of the, of the Union School District, I mean, your board, I'm saying. And that's still an option, and that timeline goes out through the voter vote by the electorate on, on and before July one, two thousand seventeen. And then there are alternate structures, which the law does open up the possibility of other creative proposals from groups of school districts to accomplish the same goals of the act. So that's another option, and the challenge your board faces, the Leland Gray Board and collectively the WCSU Board, is which school districts want to work together in what way to study what, which of these paths? That's the way you'll get funding for a grant and support to hire a consultant. But you can't hire a consultant until you, until you, I'm sorry, we as a boards, it's not me, but the boards decide what pathway you wanna explore.
Well, I'm actually not sure that's true, but I...
Well, that's what I'm told by Visbet and the SBA.
It'd be interesting to ask that question, so that'll be another...
Yeah, you can, we can ask it again on the twenty-third.
Because I think, you know, a study is a study, and if you start down the path of one, for example, accelerated, and you say, well, there's no possible way, you're still gonna be probably, you're gonna be held accountable to something, so you're gonna move to another. So I guess I would suggest that folks should look into that.
Yeah, but, well, okay. I, I think you're, I think you're saying, you're saying something that's important, too. If you, there's no reason why you couldn't have more than one study, and you could, I suppose, have a sequential study and secure a consultant to cover all the bases, but that's not advised in my conversation.
Well, my point of bringing it up is, is that I think it's really important that, that board members who are involved in a study really understand it, and one of the job of, the jobs of a consultant is, is to answer those kinds of questions, which may make those of us who are sitting in a study say, well, wait a minute, that's obviously not gonna work for us. We can't, you know, you've said it before. There are some people who are still talking about accelerated here, and I think that they need to understand what it actually means. And I'm not sure whether, we might start one path and end up in another. That's all.
Well...
Doesn't really matter. It's not really that important, no.
Well, I can report that the priorities for consultants and the funding of consultants is the accelerated group this fall, because they've all gotta head to a town meeting, special meeting vote, or something at March or in the spring. So, you know, if we're gonna join that group, we're late out of the gate. And that means we're at the second level, and, and then we have to decide whether we're going to be, we could easily evolve from that kind of a study to something alternative, more creative. And I don't think that would compromise the terms of the grant, as I understand it.
Yeah, I don't think so. So you could start out in the accelerated merger?
No, I don't think you could start out with accelerated merger and move to the second one without having a separate study, because the timeline is so short and quick. You have to, the, the, look, the accelerated study would require all of our boards to say, yes, we're gonna all go K through twelve, or we're all gonna go K through eight, we're all gonna go K through six.
And the fact that we have two.
I, I, I don't wanna be a pessimist about many things, but I'm pessimistic about that.
Mudding the waters.
Okay, so that means we're at level two.
Okay.
And level two could evolve to something more creative than what is outlined in the law, Act one fifty-six.
And one fifty-three.
And one fifty-three. But it, you know, that, that could evolve together. I could see that. And then I think you're at the end, you know, you're really at the end game after that, so the end game being the State Board of Education deciding.
These two.
Yeah, I don't see those as...
I'm not sure how they'll end up.
They could inform one another.
Yeah, I think so, too.
And the timeline for the vote is really not much different.
Right.
Okay.
Be interesting. And do you have to, do, whatever you do, does it have to create a nine-hundred-pupil situation?
No.
Well, I think that that's where the advantages of the alternate and the, the, actually, the, actually, the conventional. The conventional didn't have, it had four districts originally required.
Or twelve fifty students.
Yeah, so I, I think that that's, and, and any of these require approval by the State Board of Education. So, you know, that's the ultimate kind of, you know, okay approval. Good housekeeping seal of approval, remember that, to move on to use, you know, to move on to the vote. There's no sense going to a vote without that approval. That's the process, too.
Nine hundred is the accelerated.
So, and alternate, alternate structures and proposed structures, I don't see anything about an electorate on those. I just see they go right from submit proposal to the state.
Cause there's a deadline, probably.
And then operational honor before July first. I don't see any electorate part, electorate part to those.
Okay, so we should ask that. Why don't you note that? We'll ask that when we see...
I don't think it's in, I don't think there is a specific date.
It may be that the alternate doesn't have those.
But they do, the electorate has to...
Oh, the electorate has to vote on all of these, as far as I, I mean, I'm, yeah.
Okay. Great. Anybody, any?
The questions about?
This one, this one's specific.
Forty-six?
Questions about forty-six? Come to that meeting on the twenty-fourth. I'm sure it'll be much more clear.
It's a good place to ask questions.
Yeah. Okay, um...
Some proper questions.
The staff breakfast on August 25th. The staff breakfast, are we done with?
Yeah, we're finished, we're done on that.
The staff breakfast, review reflections of how that went, participation, lack of participation, it's a wonderful thing, it's really fun to do, really.
It's greatly appreciated.
It is greatly appreciated, and it's, this year it was very interesting, we have a lot of young teachers.
Financial.
We have a lot of young teachers, a lot of new teachers, a lot of new faces, and slowly but surely, if you've had kids in the school and you've known all the faces, pretty soon, it won't take long, and you won't recognize a face, because there are a lot of new faces. However, we really need to get some more commitment to this, from the whole board, commitment to bring something and/or-
Respond to emails.
Yeah, respond to emails, bring something, and/or be there to help. You don't have to help the whole time, if you can come and just help set up, or come and help clean up, but also bringing something. There's quite a bit of money that's been spent by a few people to do this, and I know I can't afford it anymore.
It's very expensive for those.
It's very expensive, but, I mean, it can get very expensive, fruit salads, paper goods.
Quiche.
Quiche, lots of quiche. Quiche went crazy.
We had one left.
We went through, we had five, six, seven, eight, nine quiches, and there was one left.
Bruce stepped up and slaved in the kitchen.
Yep, and Bruce did the-
Did anybody do pancakes?
Bruce!
Well, Bruce did the cooking, and it was Joe who actually went and bought the-
Brought the pancakes stuff.
I did that one another year as well.
We'll be there next year, Tony.
One year I had to drag my husband into cook pancakes, just so you know, so this is not a, not a-
Joe brings a whole bunch of wonderful bacon.
We'll be there next year, my big friend and me.
You know, so I don't know how we do this, but, you know-
I'll just speak for Joe, and if I can, just because when we were there that day, one of his levels of frustration was the lack of people responding even.
Yes.
He was really frustrated that, you know, he understood if people couldn't do it, but he just would appreciate it if people did. And I think we need to make sure we've got everybody's correct email address, and that, you know, so I'm not, I'm not sure, Joe was a little wondering about that, I think.
Well, I, I mean, I was looking for excuses, but the thing is, people don't check their right email addresses, is what it is.
That's what I guess I'm thinking, maybe this board needs to confirm which one they look at, you know, which one they monitor, and if they're not monitoring their Wyndham Central one, even though they're using that as a, as a school board email address, then I guess it would be helpful for Joe to know that.
We've done double entries under, you know, under request.
Those who asked, yeah.
And I think-
So people should say.
Although it's against my-
My thought was to discuss this at the June meeting and get commitments then, about what you can bring, so that no one person is doing all the bacon, no one person is doing all the paperware, no one person is doing, because those are the kind of expensive things, and if we can-
So what I suggest is, if we could put it on the June meeting agenda, if possible, set the date for it, which will allow me to make sure I'm available then, and then, you know, divvy up the work, and we'll have like several months to get it together.
Yep, and this was, it was-
We've actually done that in the past.
And it worked better. A little bit better.
Well, I'm just, you know, if you want my answers to that, you're not going to like this.
Got a lot of fond memories going on there.
I've done a lot of this myself, for a number of years. People have contributed, it's been great, but the work that Joe found out, it is just to get people to say they're going to do something or not, you know, it's a, we can say in June what we're going to do, but people forget, and somebody has to be responsible for making sure that everybody's on top of it, and if you send an email saying, don't forget the school board breakfast is, you know, three weeks from now, and nobody responds, then you've got to send another one, and then if people, few of them don't respond, you've got to send another one, or follow up some other way, I think it's challenging.
And then everybody, the few people-
So I think the point is, is there a commitment to doing it, and if there is, let's have the conversation in June that we're having right now, and making sure that people are committed to doing it, because I don't want Durin wondering at the last minute whether she's going to have the school board breakfast or not.
And to state of curiosity, if, if, not that we're going to do it, but if we were to ask the Abbey Group to prepare the breakfast, how much would that cost?
I wouldn't have a clue.
Eight, $10 to head.
And we're talking about 100 people?
Well, depends if you would have central office staff come, too.
Which we always do, invite central office staff, and it was nice to see them this year, we had quite a few of them show up.
So then it'd be probably about 80?
Yeah, 80.
Okay. And I mean, it's not, it's not a ton of work, because especially, I called Monday and spoke with Patty, or no, I called, I called earlier, I think I called Friday, to make sure the coffee machine was going to be hooked up and set up and ready to go, and the Abbey Group person was there, and they said, yep, we're going to, we're working on the kitchen on, and I use the term loosely, on Fri, on Monday, and everything will be all set on Tuesday, and it was, it was perfect, so a little advanced discussion with them helped.
You fixed that, because last year we were a little less prepared.
Yeah, there was, we just didn't know where-
No one knew where the coffee was, or whatever.
Yeah.
We're very grateful, by the way, just to say, thank you to Ed, who's always really helpful, and Carolyn, who came down and opened the door for everybody. It was great staff here, they really work really hard.
I think it's mostly divvying up, you know, the stuff that is required to pull it off.
If we're going to do it, everybody should be committing to it.
The paper products, the pancakes, and you don't have to actually be there to cook them, because it really didn't, you kind of flit.
Once you do the first batch, then.
Yeah, yeah.
It's typically, I'll just be straight for honest with you, every year it's typically about $200 to $300 for me to do it, honestly.
I spent about $120 this year.
Out of my own pocket. And sometimes, and we spread it around a little more this year, but I know Joe bought the ingredients for the pancakes-
Yes, he did.
Which I've done before, and so I know how expensive that can be.
Yeah.
And so, it can get quite hefty if we don't, if everybody doesn't participate, there's 11 of us, we should be able to knock that cost down, and I, you know, I think we should.
And I could have, I bought the quiches all made, I could have made five quiches, but not in the timeframe I had, knowing there's no hot item.
Joe would have spent money on the ingredients, too, so it's expensive.
You spent your whole weekend waiting for them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to at least consider getting some, one individual to coordinate it, other than the chairman.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
We should make sure that that's discussed in June.
Yeah.
So I think that's a lot of work.
I'm sure he'd appreciate that, I certainly would, if myself.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
I mean, it, you know, could reduce burnout on the chairman of the discuss there.
Yeah.
I just wanted to review with a calendar for you, so you know it isn't that random. The first day of school for 7th graders is the day when you can't do the breakfast, because the teachers, at least some of the teachers have to be out, and so it's always going to be the day before that first day of school for the 7th graders, which is the first day of school for all the K through 7 in the SU. So that's usually, and it looks like in this next year, in August, even though I probably won't be superintendent, I won't be superintendent for sure, then, is the 24th is a Wednesday of August, so it's probably be, I'm 90% sure it's going to be Tuesday, the 23rd of August, if you want to mark your calendars. I was just in response to your, you know, idea about planning ahead, Ramon, and Mondays, the 22nd is usually the day that the whole, all the teachers are here, and that's not a good day to have the Leland Gray staff invited to breakfast, so that's my advice to keep that tradition going in a coherent way, and I'm explaining the logic behind when it happens, because it may not be clear to you.
I'm going to put staff breakfast in my calendar under the Leland Gray Board Meeting in June, too, so that I remember, and hopefully others will, too, because you will be here then, and we'll be-
Yes, I'll try to remind myself, too.
That's the day that's really important, I think, that we have this conversation then. Thank you, Patty.
You're welcome, thank you.
The faculty and staff truly appreciate it, I mean, it's the warmest welcome.
That's great.
Yeah, it's, it's really fun, I enjoy doing it, really.
It's very much appreciated, it has a very much more powerful effect than something you can imagine on the staff, etc.
And it, and for some of our faculty, it's the only time they see the board.
Yeah.
Most of the faculty, in fact, so this, and for you, the same, so.
It was really nice, I enjoyed it.
New business, review work and learning at today's teacher in service.
We added policy F-30 to all businesses.
Yeah, let's go.
Oh, that's right, we did, okay, policy F-30, harassment, hazing, and bullying.
It's Bruce who asked.
That was warned last time, but you have something-
Bruce has a question, I think, right?
I just, I assume we're going to work on this F-30 policy, is that the one that we're going to use?
No.
Well, I'm sorry, we're not working on it. The one that the state is proposing combines harassment, bullying, and harassment, hazing, and bullying, right? Is that the one you're reading when you say F-30?
Yep.
Because F-30 used to be just bullying.
Yes, and that's the question.
All right.
So the one that I think you passed-
It's been out for a while, yeah. And I've passed it out to WCSU, the WCSU Board, if you attended that meeting, also approved it to warn.
There was, somehow I got a newer version of it.
Good for you.
Just more, well, we-
I don't want to see it. They're not, I hope it's not different than the other one.
No, it's exactly the same.
Thank you.
But it's numbered differently.
That's true. Originally, when I presented this to your board, I believe, with Dover, I know this is the case, I had called it 20.
F-20.
And the reason that was, is because I'm a logical, mathematical kind of a guy, I'm saying if we're doing away with 24 and 30, 20, 24 and 30, and replacing it with one policy, let's go to the lowest number. No, they wanted to go to 30, and I got strung out, because when I want to align the state agency, VSB has decided to make it 30. So it's cumulative, you know?
The motion that we made last time, last month, was to warn F-20, and-
Yeah.
And did that in one paragraph. So do we need to do anything tonight before we-
I think you should just clarify for the public, Bruce, that you're convinced that this F-20 is exactly what F-30 is, that I, that the superintendent at the previous meeting when you warned us gave it the wrong label. That's me, folks.
But that is, but that is this exact document.
It's the same thing, there's no, no difference in the document, but I do appreciate the clarification, because I do recall now, and I did have it posted on my office as an F-20 at one time.
Good catch.
Any, any questions about the language, though? I think we've resigned ourselves to the fact that we don't have much choice about this, this is an improvement over having three separate policies, certainly administration supports that aspect of it, and there is a rather extensive procedure, administrative procedure that is required or linked to this policy, but as a board, you don't approve administrative procedure, so that's the burden of the administration to come up with whatever changes we think are going to work, that we would, of course, inform the public, but for now, we're standing by what the state is endorsing.
So then I would, since Bruce put, pulled it out of the consent agenda, I will make a motion to, what are we, what are we doing?
To adopt.
You're adopting.
To adopting, we're to adopt F-30 that was warned, that is the same policy that we warned at our last meeting, but labeled it incorrectly F-20.
Thank you.
I'll second that. Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Thank you, Bruce.
I would only, am I allowed to discuss?
Yeah.
Okay, I only wanted to say that during the, it must have been last week, the administrative team with the planning room staff, so it was five of us, sat and reviewed the policy and the procedure in great detail, assigning roles accordingly, and are just about ready to move forward once it is adopted by the board.
Great. I do have a little statement, I happened to look on Jamaica's website today and look at their, they have a little survey that they've done, student survey, and everything was great, except in bullying, and it was, it was as high, bullying, being bullied had a high percentage, but also bullying, somebody who bullied, they admitted they bullied, and there were a lot of them, and it's a small school, so a lot is not really a lot, but it was the only area of, and I was like, look at that.
I think it's actually encouraging that some kids are aware that they're bullying. That's the beginning of a solution.
It was like 50%.
Most of them, usually in my history, they've been in denial, you know?
I looked at the first, and it was about 50%, I said, oh, that's sad, and then I looked at the next one, and it was, have you ever bullied? 50%? Yep.
Well, we ought not to assume it's the same group, and maybe it is.
I was just going to say that, maybe it's the same group.
The youth risk behavior survey is very similar, its results about, they're all part of the system.
Yeah, it has very serious consequences for children, yeah. So, any more discussion?
All those in favor, aye.
We just have to say, all those in favor, aye.
Oh, that's right.
Go, vote.
Okay, what do I do now?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstentions?
Any abstentions? Okay, the motion has been passed, and-
Policy is adopted, and already they-
Policy is adopted, and away we go, thank you.
And away we go.
Yeah, and I practiced that.
The minutes will say, move to adopt F-30, harassment, hazing, and bullying, for ends previously warned as F-20.
Right. The same language was one of that.
I think, I think the word I put in there was previously incorrectly warned as, it's the same-
Incorrectly labeled.
Labeled as, that's what I-
By the superintendent, I think.
Yeah, that should put the superintendent.
Incorrectly labeled as, because it's important that we know that this has not changed.
Get all the fine details.
It's a mathematical problem.
It's the same document, just had it incorrect labeled.
Okay, so on to new business, review work and learning at today's, today being 9/8, teacher in service.
I think we did that.
We did that, we-
Yeah, we did that earlier, Durin gave us a really good report.
I could share more, I mean, but-
No, 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 really.
Fine for me.
Or keep him right on, that's good. Okay, approve bills and pay orders.
There it is.
You can just go and run this.
Give it a rip.
Any, did we ever approve the minutes under the consent agenda?
Well, it's coming up next.
It's coming up next.
All right, any opening?
Okay, these were all checked, I know I checked, and Baman checked, I've never, okay, so, can I do that one?
Just do, yeah, you can just say this, there's six general fund warrants.
Okay, equaling, okay, we have a total of six general fund warrants, equalling $554,766.97. And there are four payroll warrants, equalling $201,864.88. Total warrants and payrolls, $756,631.85. And we'll give those to Peter after, okay, you want to move it? Oh, oh, yes.
I'll second it, even though I didn't review them, since you did, Patty, I'll.
Okay, they've been second, they've been, a motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor of approving bills and pay orders, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Abstentions? Motion has been passed. Consent agenda, the minutes from August 11th, they did come online.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which contain the minutes of August 11th.
Any second?
All seconded.
Discussion?
No discussion on consent agenda.
Oh, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion has been passed on the consent agenda. Executive sessions? None?
None.
No. Any motion there? Motion to adjourn by Lindell, any-
I'll second it.
Second?
Second it by Emily, too.
Um, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, and just to review, the next meetings, board meeting, Tuesday, October 13th, 6:30 here, is there a policy meeting?
I doubt it.
Or will you let us know?
I doubt there will be, but I'll see, I have to, yeah.
And the WCSU Board Retreat, Wednesday, that's been moved.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that ended when out before the change, so it's the 20, the, the actual retreat is gonna be October 28.
28.
But, and it's the same place, it's at the Grand Summit Lodge, Mount Snow, at 5 o'clock,